So then this is the public hearing for the 2024 tax levy. It's an opportunity for us to give time and space to any public comments regarding this. So we patiently wait and see if there are any immediate numbers that come in the next 15 minutes. But if there are questions from the board as well, um, there are, this is an opportunity to answer those too.
Are there any questions from anyone? We have 15 minutes for Tracy to explain it all over again.
Any final words Tracy?
No, nothing has changed since the last night that you all proceeded.
Just so we, just so we have something to talk about. Do you, do you like over here, the years, that the breakdown between education fund and these other funds is more or less constant here? Do you know if any districts would do it much differently than that?
Well, you know, it kind of depends on like if your expenses would fluctuate really high maybe with transportation or something like that. They may need to put some more money into the transportation fund or O and M, those types of things. You know, capital pressures and kind of expenses that they know are going to be happening throughout the year.
Yeah, and O and M you can carry forward. Okay, so if you're kind of gathering money to do a project down.
Right, right.
I mean, I guess to follow, I was just gonna follow, though, because I haven't sat in any of the school boards. Is the way we see it generally is standard across the state, the way we look at our different funds?
Yeah, you know, there's, everybody has their own method, um, but you know, there's certain funds you want to try and keep very low. Like the debt service fund, you don't want to be carrying a large fund balance in your debt service fund. There's other ones like your ed fund that can really carry a higher fund balance in.
So for instance, is that because it's a balance problem when it's in the debt service fund or it just, does it doesn't mean anything?
It doesn't look good, right? When you're sitting there, like why is this money just as a fund balance, right? Because it's kind of like, I need to stay safe inside of the savings. Kind of like your checking account, right? Where there's money, so you don't want to have money just sitting there because then that money is, people may look at it as, oh, that's not going towards education and my child. Right, sitting in that fund balance or in the fund 30 because then you can't use that towards educational instructional class.
Okay, but the way, the way we as a board visualize our funds, the way we break them up is pretty standard.
Yes, definitely, yes, yeah.
Okay, but the way, the way we as a board visualize our funds, the way we break them up is pretty standard.
Part of that reforming comes because everyone has to fill out the same form.
This is correct, yep, exactly, yep, statewide.
For the audit.
Yeah.
Well, even the request.
I mean, there are some districts down south that don't have the PTAL, you know, so you have some of them. But I couldn't speak for anything that's down south. I'm sure that's completely different there than it is up north, you know, in part of the state. But I've been in Lake, I've really only been in Lake County and Cook County.
Are there any visitors comments for this part of tonight's hearing?
No, more of the public comment at the meeting, I think. I spoke about it at the last meeting, I don't think I had to give it to them.
And when the next meeting starts, we'll do comments for each one.
I, I just have a question about that. Is it the time for comments about the, um, about the proposal or do you have any?
If you speak up, I can question you.
Is, is this the time for comments about the tax proposals or?
That's correct, so if you have questions or comments about the tax levy, this is the time. Um, everything else, that would be the next meeting which starts at 11:00.
Okay, so I, I have some comments about that. Would you mind if you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Put the microphone over there.
Okay, I'm sorry about the may I?
Can you guys share your name?
My name is Kaya Rubenstein. I live at 315 Lender Avenue in Northfield. Um, I'm a retired teacher who taught for over 35 years and I've talked to other teachers. And, um, I'm just very concerned about this proposal. Um, with all due respect to our new superintendent and we're very glad you're here and you're vastly and richly qualified. I do have reservations as to how school district 37 spends and has spent money. Um, many people questioned and a lot of us were teachers, former teachers and are very familiar with schools. And I grew up in Skokie and went to these little tiny school districts, 73 and a half, two schools, three schools. Uh, my neighbor teaches in East Prairie, which is one school, has a superintendent, a principal and assistant. has a superintendent, a principal, and assistant principal. Um, it just, I taught in a school district that was sixteen schools, and had principals at each school, and had a superintendent, and a regular, uh, uh, staff array for administrators, but nothing so outstanding, and just because other little school districts do it, it, it's just unnecessary, and I will say this as somebody who lived in a school district that is now going broke, and you all know that's Evanston School District sixty-five. My daughter went to school in Evanston School District sixty-five. I don't have any children now, I just want to proceed with, I don't have children in the school district now, but my neighbors have children, grandchildren. I have always voted for tax increases, because I certainly believe in public education, and that's how we pay for public education. But when money, in my opinion, and the opinion of so many other people, has been misspent, you're going to end up like school district sixty-five, who it, who was always, we had always argued that school district sixty-five was top-heavy in administration. And we only have two little schools, and last year, when the request was made by the business manager, and it said in the request to have our superintendent shadow, our retiring superintendent, that we only have five administrators for two schools. Our two schools' population is much less than the population of school district thirty-nine. I'm sorry, but I, I haven't had time, I have not counted the number of administrators in school district thirty-nine, but it, it just seems a little bit much to be spending this money, um, and, and to ask for a tax increase. Um, so, we don't want to get into a rut here. Taxing people is such a burden, of course, and if you're going to do it, there has to be good reason for the money spent. And, you know, in terms of what we're, what was going to be done with Evoque West, and all the things that happened around that, this was part of the reason why that referendum didn't go through. Because people, you know, they're, they're struggling, or it's just, there's so much going on. Anyway, this is not, as well as I wanted to speak, but I did just want to say that, as I, as I said, we're glad you're here, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, Superintendent Aragada, is that how you pronounce your name?
Arag.
Arag, I, I can't see, and I, I wasn't looking, but I do want to say, um, I am against this proposal at this point going forward, and, um, I'm hoping that all things will be considered. And I was always, I just want to say, I was always very pleased with school district thirty-seven. My nieces both went through Marie Murphy and Evoque West, and my daughter, we didn't move here until my daughter, uh, was a nutrier, but, um, I said, we saw the effects of what happened in a school district that has been, I'm sorry, misappropria, miss, not misappropriating, miss, just kind of misspending money for years. Uh, you, you need to, you know, be careful with that, thank you so much.
This levy is not asking for a tax increase.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we should, uh.
Thank you so much for explaining.
Maybe we could have you provide some general comments about what we're talking about tonight. Um, just, I think there are some interesting points raised, and there's a chance to, we should talk to you.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
You know, the tax levy that we were asking for is based on the prior year's tax extension. I, I'm not sure if you're asking for us to eliminate the tax levy altogether, or if you're just asking for it to remain stable maybe for a year, um, but if we don't capture what we can, it just like, it accumulates, like, once you miss that money, it's gone forever.
Right, right.
And, I don't know if you know I am, I'm Tracy Miller, I'm the new CSBO, so Bethy was here for thirty years.
Hi, no, thanks.
I'm also new.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, and so, um, you know, one thing people always have to keep in mind is, we have a CPA, the salary, and people love working here, they don't leave.
I know.
The salaries increase every year. Um, health insurance, I'm sure you know, especially.
Increase.
Are increasing every year, so if you don't increase the taxes by what we're allowed to by law, I don't know how we would be able to keep up with the salaries, just the salaries and the benefits, without even talking facilities, right? Like, there are things.
Chris, we're not advocating for tax increase. We are, the tax will be what the county determines, the property taxes.
Exactly, yes.
All we are levying here is our share of that.
That is correct.
But it seems like an increase because we're going to CPE.
Correct, right, right.
You know, maybe another way to tackle it is, if we did not have, uh, this measure, let's say it did not pass somehow, what would happen towards?
We're, nothing's up for a vote.
Hear me out.
Yeah. So, again, here's a tax levy, the current tax levy is always based on the prior year extension. If you have one year where you say, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna pass this tax levy, and now it's zero, the, the county gives us zero dollars, the next year, we say, yes, we want a tax levy again, the only amount you're going to be able to tax on is new construction, and now you just gave away all your millions of dollars, and you will never recoup that in a lifetime of.
Of school expenses. But we could not run our school.
Absolutely not, cannot run it.
So, I, I think to Dr. Dar's point, um, this is not about, uh, increasing, you know, taxes in some significant or unusual way, um, this is about being able to fund our schools. That's what this measure is about, it happens on an annual basis, so I don't want you to think there's anything new or unusual happens every single year.
So the county will collect whatever it collects for property taxes, and we are, every public utility district asks for their share, and this is our, this is the ask for our share. We're not asking anybody to tax our residents more or less or anything.
Right.
So, just to capture what you're saying, the amount we're all paying in our property taxes has already been determined, that has nothing to do with tonight. But how much the school gets of that is what's being asked for tonight.
Okay.
So, in, in that way, it's very different from our referendum, where we're saying, yes, increase our taxes.
Yes, right. We're actually asking for increasing the tax, you know, your taxes are also, depends on what your assessment is. Right, so your tax rate sometimes, you know, it's kind of like a teeter-totter between the tax rate and the assessment, because when the market's low, you're gonna see the tax rate go up. When the market's high, the tax rate is kind of most likely to go down when it remains stable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, that's why I came.
It's a complicated topic.
It is.
Yeah, school finances, I still, you know, you know, been on the board for so many years, such a challenge.
I can break your bubble on that, if there are so many years I haven't seen them, but, um, but it's, it's definitely an interesting topic that always gets sketches. Um, alright, so we are at six o'clock, are there any other comments on the levy here?
Just one, Charles, it's about getting Evoque's fair share, so that's really what it comes down to, and I think a lot of people don't understand that, that what, like you said, it's not additional, it's taking our fair share of what the county assessment is on our properties and what Evoque gets, just like what the fire department gets, or the village gets, or the, or the park district, or anybody else, it's us getting our fair share, and if we don't stay on top of it, we lose, then you never get it back. So you never want, and, and it basically covers teacher salaries and things of that nature. So that, it's important for people to understand that, because actually what happened last year, and now people see this, they think, oh, they're going for another raise, no, we're just getting our fair shares. And because you have to publicly post this information, it makes it look like there's something else going on. So I just, again, clarifying what you guys said, and, and as a, you know, a, a public official, elected official, and as a resident and a long-term resident who has some kids here, I get it, and I think that's what people have to understand. So that's why I just want to agree with you guys on what you're doing, and it's the right thing.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you all.
Alright, I think I can please visitor comments, um, give you a motion to return, I believe you do.
I'll move the board adjourned the meeting. Second.
Do you have a voice book for this one? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All votes. Alright, motion is passed, the meeting is adjourned. Let's move to our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting.
The Board of Education meeting is set for Thursday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, will be called at six, so we, Dr. Dar?
Here.
Mr. DeBorey?
Here.
Ms. Albring? Here. Mr. Yeh?
Here.
Mr. Seals?
Here.
Dr. Das?
Here.
Dr. Charo?
Alright, are there any additional names?
We do not have any.
Uh, and I heard rumor there might be an additional visitor's comment this morning.
It's a rumor, but, um, Ms. Yeh, Ms. Kai Thunder. So on Monday, December thirtieth, at five-thirty, six-thirty, in Northfield, at Clarkson Park, which is located nineteen fifty Newell Road, there is going to be a Hanukkah menorah lighting celebration. So there's gonna be free food, there's all kinds of stuff, so as a resident of the east side of Northfield, and as a member of the village board in Northfield, Kaya has been so gracious to pass this information on, and I thought, I wasn't sure if she was gonna be here tonight, so I just want to pass this on, especially for the residents of east Northfield that are also attendees of Evoque at Marie Murphy, and anybody else that wants to attend, it's a great celebration, we had a tree lighting ceremony a couple weeks ago at Clarkson Park, and now for our other members of our other faiths, we're also doing that. So it's a great event, it's well-attended, it's free, and there's food and all kinds of that, so, just a public service.
What was the date?
It's December thirtieth, at five-thirty at Clarkson Park in Northfield.
Thank you.
The Hanukkah menorah lighting ceremony and festivities.
And it'll be inside after.
Yeah, the stuff's inside if you're within the building.
After the lighting.
So you want to freeze it after the menorah's lit.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I conclude this visitor's comments, which brings us to the issue of our vice presidency. We didn't get a chance to talk a lot about it in previous meeting, um, but I want to thank Dr. Das, who despite her busy, busy, busy schedule and taking care of people out in the world, uh, has been our vice president, um, she is getting down, is going to miss her.
Just from the vice president's role?
Just from the vice presidency. Oh, sir, you did this last year. So.
You started the revolving door.
We will need a new vice president, uh, and so I'm going to ask if there are any nominations for vice president. Anyone?
I nominate Gillian DeBorey.
Gillian DeBorey's nominee, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, uh, do we need a formal vote, I think we do.
Can I bargain with him before I vote?
You'll have to pay him here, it's not going to work. Alright, are there any other candidates? Okay, then, uh, all in favor of electing Mr. Gillian DeBorey as new vice president of the old school board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all votes. How about round of applause? Welcome, welcome, we've done as much work on you as I can. Yes, and, but I get her parking spot, so. And you get her parking spot, her extra tickle. Um, alright, so I believe, is there language I need to follow, is more formal or just gets?
Um, no.
Do you need to bequeath an oath? Right. Sword on shoulder, I mean, thank you for the nomination.
Thanks for doing it.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, in that case, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Will the board approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Dr. Dar?
Aye.
Mr. Seals?
Aye.
Dr. Das?
I.
Mr. Yeh?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorey?
I just had a quick question before my vote, the finance committee meeting, this is the last one? The previous, the one we had just, yes, there we go.
Ms. Albring?
Yes.
That's everybody, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, alright, I don't understand, you have any additional questions?
Yeah, um, so we have a short and sweet meeting tonight, but I do want to share a report with you, um, before we go on to an action item. Uh, first of all, congratulations, Mr. DeBorey, and many thanks to Dr. Das for your service. It's, um, was a pleasure working within her capacity. So last Friday, we had our international dance and talent show, and it was, once again, a huge success. There were over four hundred registrants for the event, and over twenty countries represented. I want to thank all of our board members, because every single one of you was there, and not only were you there, you were actively participating, handing out food, it was just beautiful to see, running the show, I mean, active board members at an event, and everybody attending it, wow, that's, that's really something to, to celebrate. Um, due to a nice write-up in the record, weren't sure, I don't know if any of you had a chance to play it, it was very lovely, um, I've had colleagues reaching out from other districts asking about it, wanting to partner to do things, so.
They take it on the road, obviously.
I know, I was like, I know who to refer you to, uh, I think she passed the tide, so, uh, why don't I have? That's gonna happen, um, but again, what a beautiful, lovely event, and, and thank you all for being there. The next Saturday morning, and all Saturday, we had the Marie Murphy Science Olympia Invitational. Uh, once again, very successful event, I had a chance to stop by and see some of the events, where I was standing as well as do some shopping at the book fair, that was taken away simultaneously. I'm very proud to say that our varsity, junior varsity teams took first and second place respectively, yes we did. Thank you very much to our coaches, sponsors, and volunteers, it was, uh, just a lot of action in our buildings last weekend, and it was very nice to see. The next day was the Invitational. Yeah, yeah. Crux to the staff for cleaning it up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, staff did really excellently on that.
Thank you for bringing that up, they turned it over, like, right away that night, they were doing it.
As soon as the talent show was over.
Yes, yeah.
They were everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, so they made that happen, and, yeah.
Because when you have to run the vehicles and do other things, you have to have a clean floor, and, so, you have to.
They took care of it, so if you were at the talent show, if you had walked into the gym, you would see that it was already getting started to, as we were doing the talent show, they were cleaning up the area where the people, so they took care of it. Um, last thing, I just want to announce that in January, for all of our community, we will have one board meeting. We have listed two for the month of January, but we will only be having one on Thursday, January twenty-third, and the meeting for January the ninth is canceled, so again, we'll see you in January. I want to, uh, take this opportunity to wish all of our students, families, and staff a happy winter break, a happy holiday season, and, um, yeah, happy new year twenty twenty-five. And that is all for the report.
Wow, that was great. Any questions, comments for the superintendent?
I wanted to say something about Dr. Arag's comments during the, um, show. Um, thank you for making those wonderful comments, I think that it was so insightful, um, and I, I always thought of this event as a place where students could be, it was, it's like a grand affinity and alliance sort of group where people identify with their different cultures, and there's so many multiracial, um, families that they'll identify with multiple people, and they'll put tables together, um, families together, and you highlighted how children are seen in that space, and I thought that was really beautiful to say, so thank you.
Is there a recording of the talent show anywhere, like, on our site, or, did we record it?
We, I have pieces of it, I think everyone has pieces, yeah, but no, we don't have a recording.
It's, I think because you changed it to a separate event, the show changed, because the kids have a real audience, it's not just whoever's eating their food at the time sitting in a chair, I, I mean, I walked in a little late for a dance number event, should have been today, so maybe next year, as a school, because it's, there's nothing that says Evoque more than that, right?
I have to say, Mr. Furman, who is our backstage extraordinary person, what, had, I think, twenty arms that night? Doing about.
Always rude for another.
And when the sound went out, and Mr. Bear came, and flipped the switch, and we almost didn't have a show, it was Mr. Furman, Mr. Bear, and we were just like, ah, and, and he made it happen, so, thank you.
It was quarter, quarter in the month.
This was after many years, coming later than the set-up time, because I wasn't actively participating, and there was not even parking spots along the curb. I mean, all the spots were taken, the back was taken, and people were parked right up to Illinois, along the curb. And I wondered if that's how it is every year, or if this year was especially full, which, I mean, I really want to celebrate, but it just, I hadn't seen that part of, of the, of that, the parking lot at that time, it's really.
I feel like, because I missed the last one, so this is the first year I saw the, the show after dinner, and I think that causes people to stay longer, so. It used to be you ate and caught whatever act was up there at the time, but now everyone eats, waits, sees the show, no one leaves in the middle of the show, so you, you capture people for a full two hours.
Yeah, we've had problems where we thought about weird parking, secondary parking, and this was pre-pandemic, and there was, obviously, we didn't do it during the pandemic, and so because of that, we lost a whole generation of kids, like, you know, starting kindergarten, and they didn't know about the event, and so we had to build for the last few years, so I think this is a natural increase in them.
And next year, the title will be passed on to?
Gina Song.
I'm kidding, are you aging?
I don't know, we'll see.
No, but my ears are probably.
How should I sound public?
Parents are a race.
There are, there's parents, I'm very excited, so, yeah. And we had young parents who had never seen it, and they were very excited to see an event like this, and it blows everyone's minds.
The best part of the event always is, the buzz is, what was at the American table? This year was pizza, I think, a couple years ago, there was spaghetti, like, what's defined as American in a Voca? So that's what it's about.
Yeah.
I should also acknowledge, um, since we're not starting it, and a partner, and maybe including Mr. Seals' wife.
Yeah, I didn't start it, it was actually Mia's, Mia that started it.
And I used to do all the moving, you're further.
How long have we been doing it?
This is nine, nine years, Lourdes Fornelia started it, and Mia, I think Lourdes and Mia were in co-teams, yeah.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Powerful parents in Evoque. All right, so why don't we move on to item number seven, discussion with action?
Move the board to approve the twenty twenty-four final tax levy and resolution as presented. Second. Mr. Yeo.
Yes.
Mr. Lori.
Yes.
Ms. Alfred.
Yes.
Dr. Dar.
Aye.
Mr. Seals.
Aye.
Dr. Das.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, that brings us around to item number eight, one more round of visitor's comments, if there are any.
Give up the great work.
All right, and I have a movement to adjourn, the open session.
I move, no, I can't do this, this is the wrong one. I'll do it. Move the board to adjourn, close session for the purpose of, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who served as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity. However, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of the public body that is subject to the local government, Wade Increase Transparency Act, may not be closed, and shall be open to the public and pursue and held in accordance with this act. Second, nine point two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules, or any, for one or more classes of employees.
Second, well done. Dr. Das.
Aye.
Mr. Seals.
Aye.
Dr. Dar.
Aye.
Ms. Alfred, yes, Mr. Lori, Mr. Yeo.